Basically, form the objectives, the top priorities, if you will, that are contained under each target. And of course, each target is to achieve a goal. And so the purpose is to basically get information at a level where it sort of wraps up to meet the goal overall. And so you won't see individual items that have been talked about at certain times. Because individual projects would lead to the achievement of those top priorities, those objectives, if you will. So just wanted to give you that overview and tried to lump them as best I could in terms of what seemed to relate to each other. So certainly happy to answer questions about that as we go through the goals and any questions that you have. I will make my best effort to answer those questions and may call on Kathy or Annette to assist with that. We do have Annette and John taking notes for tonight. And so hopefully, we capture everything. So I'll go through the presentation itself. And then at that point, turn it over to June to facilitate on the items. So next slide, please. So the purpose of this evening's meeting is basically to finalize the 2021 work plan. And we'll review the plan and confirm that we understood correctly the council indicated priorities. And then also discuss any of the projects already in process that you may have questions on. So this is meant to be a culmination of the council's efforts and staff support to develop the full 2021 work plan. Next slide, please. So from a timeline standpoint, if you recall, we had the winter retreat in February of this past year. And then we had the budget retreat in October. And you know, the budget is meant to implement the council's priorities. That was sort of a challenge this year, just simply because of both the reduced revenues for 2020 and 2021. And also, the COVID-19 didn't allow us to meet in person and really have a full-scale discussion of these items. And then, of course, we had our first special meeting in January of this year to talk about priorities for 2021. And then we planned to have a winter retreat to focus on the 2022 work plan. And also, you've indicated that you wanted to revisit the overarching goals, those five high-level goals. And so we'll plan on that. Next slide, please. So this is a look back. Well, actually, this is. Excuse me. Allergies are acting up. This is the budget and planning cycle that we use every year. And this looks at the plan as it was being developed for 2021. And so we're using that as an illustration of how this process works. So the winter retreat happens to basically develop the work plan. And that was the intent of that work planning retreat in 2020 to develop the 2021 work plan. And then in the spring, that's when we start aligning the work plan outcomes and objectives in order to then be able to use that in the summer when we do the budget drafting. And so the budget is meant to be based on the winter planning retreat, the goals and objectives that the council sets and drives the budget process so that staff can achieve the goals and outcomes that you set. And of course, then in the fall is the budget planning retreat or the budget retreat, I should say. So for this year, now, we will have our winter retreat sometime in this first quarter. And then in the spring, staff will start working on those objectives, outcomes, priorities for meeting your goals. And then in the summer, we'll be developing the budget again to achieve your goals. So that's how we intend to use this process and how we've tried to use it in the past. Next slide, please. And so this work plan, we've drafted as best we could based on council feedback analysis. And again, we want to ensure that our work aligns with council's goals and achieves what you want to have achieved. And so the documents reviewed tonight will be the full plan and the 26 council priorities that you've indicated when you went through the list. And then also, there's over 50 initiatives underway. And projects that the staff has already begun working on are included 18 of the 26 priorities that council set. So some of the work is started and will continue. Next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to June to facilitate your discussion about the work plan priorities. Thank you. I believe we can stop screen sharing with this presentation.
Okay. So I apologize, I was sent a different link. So I was delayed in joining. So I apologize for that. So council, let's remember what the, let's refocus on what the objective is. You've already identified through a process that staff has accumulated your votes, as it were, your priorities. And the goal is to make sure that there is agreement between what council is looking forward to in 2021 in terms of what the city manager and his staff will be working on. You know, what I love about work plans, it is a great planning process. It's an important part of helping us establish goals and objectives and desired outcomes. Just a reminder, it's also a decision-making tool. Because the challenge with priorities, as you know, and those of you who've been on council for a while, is other things come up. New priorities, new requests, new opportunities, new challenges that must be met. And the beauty of a prioritized work plan is, as you go through this year as a council, the dialogue between you and the city manager in his office is where does this new project fit in relation to existing priorities? What can get done? What can be postponed? What can be reevaluated in terms of output? Do we postpone that to 2022? Do we scale back what we're actually trying to accomplish? So the goal is, is that it becomes a true working document. It is not a document that you put in a file at the conclusion of this work session and then never look at it again. So those of you who have experience in that, you may want to weigh in about how that works. So comments or questions in terms of outcome and what we're trying to accomplish? Or what else do you need in terms of information before we evaluate and review those priorities, the 26, and see what kind of consensus we have? Okay. Roger, if you guys would please screen share again the results of our tabulation so we can look at those priorities. And I know, council, you received all this in your packet. So you may have had a chance to already preview and review this information. But let's just see where the questions are and where the gaps are. Okay. Roger, are you or Kathy going to do a little brief analysis about what we have in front of us so that council, just that we all have the same frame of reference? Make sure we're all on the same page.
Again, John, do you mind expanding the?
Thank you, yeah.
Green shot, just so those of us with little older eyes can see it. And if you would get rid of that bar on the right-hand side, just click on that little arrow. That one, yeah. Go to the, right there. Perfect, thank you.
There we go.
All right. So as I mentioned, we have the five overarching goals. And you know, we'll be revisiting those in the planning session winter retreat that's coming up for 2022. We continue working with those for now since our 21 budget was based on those, basically. And then second column from the left is the target. And so it breaks down that goal into targets that would achieve the goal. And so, you know, for promoting a balanced and thriving city economy, we have three targets. One is location of choice for primary employers, as well as create a sense of place and catalyze development in identified key areas. And then under those, we have the priorities, objectives. So again, attract diverse employers, support startups and local businesses, work with real estate community on market opportunities, update conference plan and submaster plans, as well as Mile High Greyhound Park. And that's based on the council priorities, basically. So these are the top-ranked items. Well, let me rephrase that. The ranking is based on the number of people who rated it. And then we have the column that's projects in process. So in other words, the number of these have started already. So that's how you read this particular slide worksheet. John, why don't you go to 2021 full plan? So.
Now it is an eye chart, Roger.
Yeah. Go ahead and expand it. Yeah, make it bigger, thanks. So again, and just scroll down, click a minute, down to the bottom. So these were all sent out to you and shows the five goals with the targets underneath. Go back up to the top, John. Thanks. And so you can see, you know, what was ranked low, medium, high. And then the X shows council priority. And then the last column with an X shows what's already in process. So that's how you read this thing and how to basically follow the logic of what we tried to represent to you in terms of the priorities you set. Are there any questions on any of these priorities, objectives?
Let me just jump in because this was when you reviewed this with me, Roger, for our purposes of this discussion. Council, you've probably already seen that. But in that third column, under top priorities and objectives, for those items that are currently in process, for some of those items, you'll see in parentheses, like 20% and/or 30%. Roger, that's percentage of completion based on the director's input. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So back to Roger, if you'd restate your question, sir?
I was just asking if there were questions about any of the specific top priorities, objectives?
Also, Member Noble?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, I do have questions. When I was completing this, some of the things seemed to me to be items that departments ought to be doing anyway, that it wouldn't be something that we would be saying, this is a council priority, that it would be an internal organizational priority anyway, no matter what department was making the suggestion. So that would be the column that reads total priority ranking by council. And then when it came to council priority, I didn't even mark those at all because it seemed to me that those departments should be doing it, whether it's the police department, or IT, or human resources, or something like that. So this process threw me a little bit. And then the other, so then we also have items that are in the top, if you will, 16 that are already in process. So I don't know why those are counting when they're already being accomplished. They're already happening. And then the third thing is, what about the things that were critically important to a council member and they're not on to a council member or the council member's community? And they are not in the top 16?
Yeah, in order, yeah, go ahead, Roger. The first one relates to projects that, in Councilmember Noble's perspective, it would be part of departmental operations anyway. Way in on that, sir?
The answer is going to vary based on which item it is. And so we would have to do a little bit of a dissection of that in order to answer that question. So let me take the second question first because I think that's probably the easier one or quickest to answer. The projects in process were either started in 2020 or... Well, let me back up. No, there would all be items that were started in 2020. And therefore, either we need to continue or we need direction from council to stop doing those, to discontinue those items. So that would be council's direction that if you don't want a particular item that's in process now to be finished, you could tell us to set it aside. And either it becomes something to do in 2022 or kill it all together, depending on what your view is. So that's the easiest one to respond to. In terms of operations, again, some of those items are going to be items that we view as essential. But again, if council wants to change our direction, then, you know, we would need to change direction. What I mean by that is, you know, you say that some of these items staff should be doing anyway. But again, there may be difference of opinion. For an example, let me just try to find one here real quick. Increase information available to the public. There's different layers of availability of information that we can achieve. You know, so on one hand, we may be getting out some general information. And, you know, if you want a higher level of information to go out, then that would become, you know, a priority that we would need to devote additional time and effort to it. I recall in 2020, there was dissatisfaction with the level of Spanish translation that was occurring. And council said, hey, step it up, provide more information in Spanish. So we stepped it up. You know, we increased the number of hours for Spanish translation, which had a budget cost, but we figured out a way to absorb that. But again, you know, that's the type of thing that, you know, you may say, well, staff should be doing that anyway. But again, it depends on the level of effort that council wants, so.
Oh, well, Roger, man, interrupt for a minute because I just want to be clear. I wasn't saying this is what they should be doing anyway. I'm only suggesting that I didn't mark it as important because I thought they would be doing it anyway. But I don't want the department head who made this suggestion as a priority that somehow, like say, in my case, said, I don't care about that item. I do. I may very well have thought it was a wonderful idea, but I didn't mark it as a priority because I figured it was internal. So this was, this list is a combination of internal suggestions from departments and some council priorities from 2020 and some council priorities from 2019 that weren't discussed in 2020. So it was all a bit of a mishmash to me when I was looking at this and difficult to really tighten down so that we were all speaking the same language and all on the same page in terms of the votes that we were putting forward. And the two examples that I will give you of things that are important is that my district has the most metro districts of my ward has the most metro districts of any of the wards. And it didn't come through as a priority, even though it was something that we voted on last January. And I have the results of that vote. And it wasn't accomplished in 2020. And now it's not on the list for 2021. That would be a huge disappointment to my constituents. Jennifer brought, sorry, Councilmember Alan Thomas brought up last night, the senior navigator. And I knew that was on the list, on the priority list. And this is what the senior commission is asking for. And yet, it's not on our priority list. It didn't make the priority list. Those are very disappointing. And I don't know, you know, blame my newness, but I really don't. I'm a little frustrated by the process and disappointed in the outcome in some ways.
Well, let me take the first one you mentioned, metro districts. That's under the goal promote a balanced and thriving city economy. And then it's under the target of improve efficiency and effectiveness of development review process. It's the last target item, last objective item, I should say, under that target. And so it's metro districts. We show 20%. It's underway and it's at 20%. I know there was a report that was given that was specifically about reunion metro districts. And my understanding is you would like additional review and.
Because we didn't discuss service plans either. And there are opportunities under service plans to ask for other things that we haven't asked for. We can cap mill levies. There's a lot of things that we can do, but we need to have a discussion and a thorough discussion of that. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, my point is, though, it's on the list and it's at 20% accomplishment. Is that not the expectation of council?
I don't know. That's the question. If it's not one of the 16, then what does it mean?
It means that no one rated it as a high, medium.
Well, somebody did.
Let me back up. Yeah, three people rated it high, two people rated it as a medium, and one rated as low.
That's pre-medium-high, right? But it's not a council priority?
Well, we tried to indicate the top priorities. And that's how the 26 were arrived at. For example, if you look at the top, the very first one, attract diverse employers, four council members rated that high and two rated it medium. Therefore, it's a higher priority than the metro districts, which had a 3, 2, and a 1. So that's the logic behind, you know, which ones are the top priorities? Because not everything can be a top priority. So again, we had to go by the number of council members who rated it high versus medium versus low. And so it didn't rate as high as the ones that got fours and fives as a high priority.
So I think the purpose of the exercise again was to, it's a straw poll to say where does council as a body, the nine of you, weigh out in terms of the priority and your understanding of the activity or the outcome that is desired? It is a starting place for conversation. There is a lot of agreement on council. I mentioned this to somebody, I like to start with areas of agreement. You know, what do we already agree upon? When I first saw this list, I challenged Roger and his team. And I said, so did we really get good priorities? Because 26 items showed up as priorities, 26. That's a lot of priorities with limited resources and both revenue in terms of money and time and people, the power to accomplish this. But it is a starting place, council, to say, are we on the track, on the right track? Do we have the right things in place, knowing that some things are going to be postponed, moved appropriately? And so, but thank you for that quick reaction in terms of, yes, for you personally, there's some things that are missing in terms of priorities. But that is the result of the first look, which is waiting through voting, tabulating those numbers.
Yes, and we don't cap the votes. We know what we did when we did high, medium, low, but we don't know what the votes were of the survey monkey or whatever it was that we returned. And not everyone did it the same way. I know that for a fact.
Well, you have the votes, the number count in that column of total priority ranking by council. It shows how many council members rated it high, how many medium, or how many low. So you have the vote number from the council members.
That wasn't, that was from the survey and not from our meeting, then you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mayor, I think we have some other one-way answer.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you. It is upsetting to me as well to see the results. And I just was really upset and concerned personally when I see that promote resident health, safety, and education is a third priority opposed to the city's economy. Because if our residents aren't safe and healthy and educated, how can we improve our economy the way I feel? And then especially being a councilwoman for Ward 2, we have one of the highest crime rates. And I have mentioned this previously. Somewhere in there, I had hoped to see hiring more police officers, even contracting with a possible company. So for the second priority with IT, where it's recording, record on demand in the police department, I want to see some officers in here before I see some IT technology. And having body cams is going to protect the officer. But I don't even see that on there either. So that's really concerning to me. You know, like I said, I, you know, everyone had a say in this. But I really, you know, was kind of upset not seeing the resident health, safety, and education as one of the top higher priorities. Because I mean, if we're not health and safety and educated, what's going on? How can our economy thrive? And that's how I feel.
Well, sorry, the listing of the five overall goals, that is not in a priority rank.
Okay.
That's just the way they've always been listed for the last several years. And so promote resident health, safety, and education. If you look over in that column that shows priority rank, there's actually 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. 11 of the 26 top priorities by council is in that group, under that goal. So I would offer to you that that really is a high priority for council. And therefore, it's going to be, you know, seeing a lot of attention.
So where is the hiring of more police officers instead of the IT? I mean, I believe IT and technology is important. But I remember I mentioned before, you know, I remember I mentioned before, you know, hiring more officers and I don't see that on there either.
Again, uh the two thousand and twenty budget, you restored the budget cut. That was proposed for the police department, but that keeps the officer level at its current level. It does not add officers. So the budget is not there and so that would have to be a priority. That you would propose for two thousand and twenty-two, uh you know, when we start that budget process. Does that make sense?
Well, no, and I I can, if you know, I can find it later on in the week, but I thought at one time, if I recall correctly. I thought there was extra money from one of the COVID funds to go towards hiring um more police officers. I thought we we had extra money from that somewhere. If I recall correctly, maybe I'm wrong, but.
That was to reimburse for the uh time that the officers spent. Uh dealing with COVID that did not go for additional officers. And so uh another way to say that is that uh made up some of the deficit. Of our reduced revenue for two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
So what we're start- starting to see here, folks, as you as you know, is that um. There's a lot on the list and not everybody gets all their choices. And then so again, the starting place is. What are we agreeing on? Do we have a foundation of agreement? Do does? Do we have enough guidance for our city manager and his staff to be able to say, these are things that you can and should tackle. Um in priority order. Cause Roger, it's also my understanding that. You know, even some of the things that are not, that did not weigh out as a priority, they're in progress and and unless you get guidance. Otherwise, you will continue to work on them and you're trying to find a way to manage resources to accomplish all the goals and objectives on this work plan.
Yes, um in other words. I'm trying to figure out a way to phrase this. All of this will be worked on. The items that are listed as council priority absolutely get our attention and they're the first priority. The items that are in process will continue to work on. And then the items that are not listed as council priorities and we're not currently working on. If we have time to get to them, we will do them, but uh again. With limited resources, not everything is going to get done. And so think of it in terms of those priority rank. Council priorities come first and then the items that we're working on already come second. And if we have time, we'll get to that third category of stuff that isn't council priority and isn't started.
So provide you the operational direction. So um let's see, there are others that need to weigh in. I see some hands. And her cat.
Sorry, I had a helper there. Um I I actually quite like how the process ran. And I think it is challenging going through it to pick out what's the most important of this list, cause everything's important. Um but I did have a question kind of in line with Councilmember Nobles. Um about things that I kind of thought, do I need to rate this? Because I think it's already happening just as kind of a. Daily procedural type of thing. And you know, one example of. Of that type of priority that I can pull off of here quickly is um decreased domestic violence. That was rated as a high priority because it is, that's a huge priority for anyone, any city, anywhere. But I would think just by virtue of having a police department, that's something that's addressed ongoing. Um not to say that there couldn't be additional initiatives related to domestic violence. But I would see that as an additional priority above and beyond what the daily. Priorities of our police department might be. Does does that resonate with anybody else?
We see a few had nods. Yes, Councilmember Smith and others.
So in in that way, I think some of the way, some of the things that ended up prioritized as high might. So you say there's sixteen council priorities. I think there's probably less than that in terms of actual tangible. Um. Actionable priorities, if you will, um with a a project attached to it. Um because I I don't know, I can't think of, and someone correct me if I'm wrong. I can't think of a specific project attached to something like decreasing domestic violence that we have as an ongoing priority right now. Um so just to say, I think there's probably less top priorities than what it looks like. Does that make sense? And I don't like another stab at it. It's like one more shot at this list. Because of now kind of seeing in retrospect how it how it plays out and what becomes a priority um.
Yeah.
You know, with more discussion around what, you know, what is, what are some of these and are they just daily ongoing tasks of our departments?
Yeah, let let me ask others to weigh in if you would. We've heard from uh two or three of you. In terms of your frame of reference as you prioritize, we heard that uh a couple of people prioritize this and 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 did not prior- prioritize items. Uh Councilmember Noble, for example, when you thought it was something that should be, it was a procedural process project that. That that is the nature of police work. That is the nature of community development or whatever. So it uh this is a lesson learned in terms of process. To make sure that our our measurement system and how we evaluate in the frame of reference of what you're prioritizing. Um so when you do work planning for two thousand and twenty-two, that we're all on the same page. So it. Would others weigh in just to see how far off we are or or are are we talking by exception by a a couple people?
Councilmember Hurst.
Uh I I'm not sure I can appropriately judge how far off we are, cause I'm just not sure. How others voted, but um did want to clarify how I approached the voting system and in. The way I looked at it is if I thought it was currently happening and I wanted it to either. Get more focus and increase speed, um then I prioritize that higher. And if I thought it was something that we could focus on less, um. I I think the example that I that I go back to is Armando working on um lean processes in HR. Well, if he's already kind of knocked out the low hanging fruit, as was discussed. It's not that I don't think that's a priority, but it's not something that I'm going to ask him to spend additional time on this year. And so I rated that a little bit, or I rated that low. Um. And I think I was under the understanding that that's still a priority of his, but um he's not going to cancel a meeting to work on that. And so um that's kind of the approach I took with grading. Everything was like that, like, do I want more time on this next year? And it to be at the top of the list, or do I want this? I still care about it, but it's not gonna um overtake one of the things that marking is important.
I thank you for that analysis. Others?
Councilmember Noble.
Um you can go to Councilmember uh Madera first, Mayor, uh because he actually raised his hand, I think. In response to June's question, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, so you know, kind of learned a little bit from previous uh budget retreats and. The first one was really tough because um, you know, there was things that you saw that was going on and. If we didn't vote for them, they kind of did fall by the wayside and they got pushed back, you know, further out and other things. Took priority that council um, you know, gave priority to that year. And so. You know, when I look at this, I look at, you know, not everything can be a priority. So. I try to be strategic in what I rank as high. And knowing that for everything that I have to rate something high. I'm gonna have to rate something low in order for, you know, this not to just be a list of all.
Of all seven highs. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause then then you don't have any priorities, right? And um so, yeah, you you gotta vote for everything. Like when I look at. Um decreased domestic violence, I think of our victims advocate program. Is that something that we're still prioritizing and need to direct funding and time and resources to? At the same levels or higher? Or is it something that, you know, we can pull resources from and, you know, funding from? So when when I look at these, like, I do rank all of them. I don't take anything for granted as being something that we're already doing. For that reason, because I know if we do, you know, rate something lower, that's gonna. Get a little less focus as, you know, these other things that we we rank higher.
And I think you mentioned something pretty um important there, Councilmember Madera, which Roger. Your budget meeting has already been set in October, so funding has been allocated to various programs and departments and 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 whatnot. So based on that, then if something ra- rates higher. Then council, you have to make that tough decision, I believe, to then say, we need to take money out of this pot. Because this becomes a bigger priority based on current need. And and that kind of adjustment has to occur because you just can't keep adding to the budget. It it is a finite resource, as we all know, and. Isn't that a pain in the neck?
Right, and so we will bring back to council uh some proposals for either reappropriations. Or new appropriations uh as we see need and council will have a chance to. To uh either say yes to those or say no, you you need to focus here and put more money in this area. Uh and that occurs typically. Generally no earlier than May, but usually it's in June and it may be July. And just depending on how long the audit takes to be completed. So it's based on, you know, current year revenues and and how we. Um actually ended up in two thousand and twenty. So you'll you'll have another opportunity to. You know, re- readjust the dot, the dial, so to speak, through the budget process, um June, July of this year. The other thing to keep in mind, uh the chief, you know, gave us a paragraph about domestic violence. Uh and I'll just read the last two sentences to you. The Commerce City Police Department will increase its capabilities. To thoroughly investigate reports of domestic violence in an effort to end abuse. This will result in a potential increase in reporting as we work with our victim advocates to bring awareness to this topic. So. You may see the reverse of what you would expect as you bring attention to. For example, the subject of domestic violence, you may actually see an increase in reports, not because there are more incidents. But because people are more comfortable actually making a report. And and so. You know, sometimes the numbers can be misleading or lead you to a wrong conclusion unless. You know, you have the background of what's going on with it. So just offer that as perspective. Sorry, go ahead with the next one.
Mayor Protim.
Um so now I've got to go back and think, but um so. Uh doing this process for a few years, I I still like the process the way that it is and it kind of reminds me of. One of the first times that we did it and we had the sticky notes and we, you know, put the sticky notes on things that we thought were important. You know, and so I I I rated everything, like whether it was low, medium, high, I rated everything. Because I figured like between the nine of us, things that were important were gonna kind of come forward and and prevail out of it. Um but I also tried to look at, you know, our council goals and like what are thing, what are. You know, priorities or whatever underneath that council goal that's going to get us closer to that council goal. So, you know, I tried to l- look at the overall um uh picture as well. Um but again, I just, I I I think that it's. There's nine of us, like I like, we're all going to have certain things that we feel should be, this should be more of a priority. We're all going to have those things. And I think that that this is a a good process to hear all of us. So. That's that's where I'm at. I I, like I said, I did what uh Councilman Madera did and I rated everything.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yeah, thank you. Um yeah, I I I think cause we're a little older on here, we, I ranked everything. Um looked at our goals and regardless, uh I I just ranked everything and and knowing that we're going to come in. And we're going to discuss um why we ranked this or how many you got. Um but I didn't pick and choose like, well, they should be working on this or they shouldn't. I just ranked the whole list. So that's how I did it too.
So, anybody else do anything differently?
Uh the only thing I'd add is that I I'll admit that I probably ranked some things higher, like in the medium range, then. Then, you know, like my original assessment of how I did it, you know, I I probably should have had more lower priorities on my list. But I too knew that we'd come back here, we'd discuss, you know, the those with the top priority and make those final decisions. Uh at least that was kind of my expectation. And so um was okay with some of my rankings if they became lower. I have, you know, I added a column that I put my comments in for the ones that I really wanted to make sure I remembered. You know, the the idea behind it. And so um, you know, I kind of had the expectation that there would be some that I rated medium. That will easily fall to the low hit, low priority list and probably some that um are high that knowingly was going to hit the the median priority list. But just making sure that. I showed that I was okay with more time dedicated to that specific topic in the following year, knowing that. We're going to have to balance time somewhere and and make tough decisions. So.
I'm ready when you are, Mayor.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you so much. So I'm looking and I'm about, I've apparently have been proven to be the only stupid one on this council. So um I appreciate that and I'm perfectly willing to admit that um I didn't understand it and it didn't make. A whole lot of sense to me. So I apologize. Uh but that's, that is me and I'm more than happy to acknowledge that. I will note for the record, though, that there are people who ranked as quite high, the police department reporting tool. At five, there was no one that did it at medium or low. And the chief sent us an email afterwards saying that our interpretation at the meeting where we thought, oh, this is a great idea. That we will finally have um monthly police um activity. Or crime activity reports was not what the crime reporting tool was. That the crime reporting tool was for the community to be able to report crimes, sort of like ask a, you know. Uh submit a concern, that sort of thing. So I wonder even whether people totally understood what some of these were. Did five people rate this as highest because they want the community to report crimes? Because that's what the reporting tool is. It's not um of crime activity in Commerce City.
Mayor Protim.
Sorry, I left that up. I didn't have a response to that.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, good point, cause I did take that differently. I remember um the chief talking about. Um you know, you you can't send a detective to every stolen bicycle out of someone's front yard. Or um maybe some of those offenses that um aren't going to take priority on their call list. Give an opportunity to submit a police report online, have um. Even possibly looking at opportunities for, you know, not a detective to follow up on that. Um I think there was options of what he was looking at. And so that that is how I viewed um that reporting tool. And so that's a good point. We may have taken a couple of these a bit differently. That's that's the first thing that came into my head when. Um when I thought about that and responded to that is because I remember the chief going over that and talking about as a a tool that they're looking at. To reduce the demand on detectives, if you will.
So then I think the operative question is, uh given that changed understanding of what that item actually represents. Uh is it still a high priority for council members?
Does it change the vote at all?
Right.
Councilmember Hurst.
I'm sorry, not for me.
Councilmember Madera.
It it doesn't change it for me either. I think it's something that we need to streamline our crime reporting for citizens.
And that's fair, you know, I I'm not trying to persuade anybody to change their vote. Just wanted to verify.
Councilmember Noble.
Um that was one of the, one of the categories that I didn't um vote on because it was the police department and I thought that the chief would know best. Where he needs, when he needs to ask for money at budget time and what he wants the money to go for. So I didn't do that. But I had asked for um uh monthly crime reports. And I still would be. I had asked for monthly crime reports, and I still would be seeking that, and that is apparently not on this list.
And it could be in 2022, if it's not budgeted for 2022?
Well, except I've been asking for it since January of 2020.
Is that a council priority, or is that an individual request? I mean, do you have support for that from other members?
Well, I would hope that other people think that we need to know what the crime activity is in Commerce City monthly. But if I'm the only one who wishes to know that information, then perhaps I am the only person. Maybe I'm the only person who cares about it. It's possible.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Yes, so I think it's a priority as well, because like I said, especially within Ward Two, we have ongoing highest crime rates, and I hear a lot of constituents and residents' concerns. And, you know, I think it's part of my duty to keep not only Ward Two informed what's going on, but all of Commerce City. So I don't see what the secret is either, why it couldn't be added.
Councilmember Graham?
It's a priority for me as well, and I think there was some confusion, because there's two IT things related to the police department. And so I rated both of them high. I think the citizen reporting tool, I'm comfortable leaving my vote as high there, or my preference is high. But my understanding was from the chief that they were evaluating software to do what Councilmember Noble is talking about. And so I am kind of surprised to see that it's not on the list of things that are ongoing, because if, and someone correct me if I am not recalling the chief's comments correctly, but they're evaluating software so that they can provide better reporting in the near term. Really, they just have to evaluate and choose a software to do that. So should that be on the list? I would, I kind of think so.
I guess I'm a little unsure how to answer that. The biggest hangup has not been a lack of willingness to report. It's been the expense of trying to accommodate the existing system, which does not lend itself to easy reporting. And so, you know, either there has to be a lot of staff time devoted to reporting, or it's a very expensive solution to find a software solution. So that's, that's been the challenge. And I think what's going on in other police departments is they have staff resources that they can devote to, you know, generating a report, whereas our officers are stretched and don't have that time in order to generate those reports. And so, you know, if we're looking at a software solution, that's gonna be an expensive proposition, and that probably would be more appropriate to 2022, because it would become a significant IT project and public, or a police department project, and, you know, take a large budget appropriation for it. What we could do is we could add it here and show it as an ongoing, because the evaluation is certainly happening. You know, so that may satisfy the concern of council right now, if that's what you would wish.
The chief has his hand up. I think he can probably weigh in a little bit.
Go ahead, Chief.
Hopefully everyone can hear me. I apologize. I have a technical issue. Okay, great. Thank you. We are going to be able to produce some reports. We're reaching out to a couple of contractors that believe they can get our system up and running that I believe will satisfy council's request for crime data. The name of the company is, I'm at a loss for words right now. But we are producing some reports, and Roger's assessment is absolutely correctly. It is not a matter of not wanting to do it. It is a matter of how much staff time do we want to devote to doing that? Because if we absolutely could produce monthly crime data reports, I'm gonna have staff not doing other things but that. So I can tell you from the police department standpoint, everything that our staff needs to manage crime within the city, we have. It is a system that does not belong to Commerce City, so I can't use the data out of it and replicate it, or make it public, because it belongs to the CISC, the Colorado Information Consortium Network. They own that information. We have access to it from a public safety standpoint. It isn't anything I publicize. If I'm going to withdraw data out of that, that's gonna require me to literally dedicate a ton of staff time to be able to do that and put it in a format so that it doesn't replicate the information that we have. So we do have some work taking place on that. We've already produced a monthly auto theft report. Our neighbor's information can already go public. It's already on our website and available for viewing. We've got a couple of more reports that we're gonna be working on that we will be able to produce relatively quickly. But for a fully comprehensive look in your neighborhood to see where crime is around you, that's going to be a significant financial impact. And so we're trying to, the shelf life on our current RMS project is about two to three more years, and I would highly suggest we wait until then before we dump any more money into this system. So if there are questions, I can certainly answer them.
Councilmember Hearst?
Chief, I really appreciate that explanation, because we've heard you talk about, you know, that essentially if we're looking for a cost-effective reporting tool, similar to what we've been discussing, that it would almost require a break from AdCom. And it seems pretty unlikely that we would be able to afford that type of split and one-off on our own system. Can we talk about as a council, maybe just having that a priority of the police department by our request to look into and advocate for the changes necessary when the new RFP goes out to, you know, provide a solution for AdCom? Because to me, it's, you know, that's a two to three-year project to get that right. And so it's not gonna be a quick fix, no matter how we look at it.
Councilmember Madera?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Hearst. I think this is a priority for a lot of us, but, you know, as the chief said, he's been looking into this to bring us, you know, proposals and what the actual costs and what it's gonna take to implement this. So, you know, I was kind of just under the impression of, you know, waiting to see what our options were. And it sounds like we already have a lot of money invested into our current system that's gonna be, we have, you know, two years or three years left on that contract. So, you know, we have to consider those costs, too, on how much it'll cost, not only replacing it with the new system, but the money that we already have invested that we're essentially just dumping. So, you know, I really would like to see a more comprehensive look before adding it to a list for 2021. I think it's gonna be more of a long-term project where we need to start thinking, you know, two or three years type project, because these take a long time to implement, test, work out the bugs, test again. And, you know, I've been a part of a lot of software implementation, and it's always painful. So, you know.
So where did we land on police? It sounds like...
Councilmember Graham?
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up. I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hearst and Madera. And Chief, thank you for your comments. I think I misunderstood, because it seems to me that some of the things on the list that are lower priorities are going to be bumped to future years. And so I was thinking of it in more of a proactive way. I am not expecting that we're gonna have new software in 2021 with all the reporting capabilities. And I just was confused why it didn't make the list if it was something that we're looking at for 2022 or 2023, to start looking at that as a priority and make sure that it stays in our radar.
Councilmember Hearst?
Let's hand again, Paul Joe.
Chief, anything to add?
No, sir. I will tell you that a meeting with the Public Safety Advisory Board to go over the first of our, some dashboards that we produced, they're gonna give us some final feedback on it, and we should be pushing out some information probably by the end of this month. So we will have some 2021 monthly crime data that should be available on our website. We are working with Community Relations to sort of figure out a way to visually put it up there instead of a link. So this is a priority for me. Whether you guys vote for it or not, it's something that needs to happen. So we're moving on it. I just can't give you the robust system that I believe you need without spending a ton of money that we'd end up respending again in three years.
Member Noble?
I'm happy to go with the priority list the way it is. And I would suggest for the next go-around when we do this, that we do it closer to when we do the budget, that it can in some ways precede the budget so that it's all comprehensive and goes in together. I would also very much appreciate paragraphs from each of the, on each of the items, so I can understand their importance, or even what they mean, or what they're talking about. When we haven't discussed these things, it makes it even more difficult to vote on them. The fact that senior liaison is so important to our senior commission, that they took the time to do a motion and vote on it, which is something that they typically don't do in terms of following Robert's Rules of Order, just tells me something right there. And the fact that it would fall as not an important item, because people just didn't really understand what it was, or what it was that they were looking for. It's something that existed in Commerce City previously, and the person who did it left his position, and he wasn't replaced. So it's something that they know they had, and they don't have it now. And during COVID, it has been quite clear to them that it was something that would have been really beneficial to help the aging adults in Commerce City. But if we don't have paragraphs on each of these items, then we don't know what they even mean to the department. I would love to see the pitch from the department about why this one is important. We were told at the meeting that the reporting tool actually wasn't that critical and didn't need to be done right away. So interpreting what these are and making decisions that will help would be really important. Otherwise, it's really a staff decision. And at this point, I'm really just happy to go along with whatever the group has come up with now.
Oh, just by way of a process check, and I know others, if you want to weigh in, the danger of the exercise is that it just turns into a mathematical exercise. Oh, these are the top items, so poof, all of a sudden, we've got our priorities. The best part of the conversation is looking at the data and saying, and having the dialogue that you're having now to say, is something missing? We have a good foundation, a good starting place, and there's some agreement around what are some top priorities by the simple act of voting of high, medium, and low. So just to refocus us, and I think a couple people want to weigh in, but not to drill down on the details of what that reporting system, the police department, in terms of bringing us back to a strategic level, is there anything else that's missing, or that you want to weigh in to say, help me understand, council, why you voted that way? I thought it was important to me, and I want to make a case for it, so that we, everybody feels like their perspective and point of view is represented after the vote. So I just want to check in process-wise. Anything missing? Go ahead, sir.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Thank you. Again, I think process is what we're doing. I just wanted to also make a comment to Councilwoman Noble. You know, I get the senior commission wants a person, but every boards and commission would like stuff also. And that's the tough job of being a councilperson is, how do we prioritize stuff? I agree, they had somebody, they're gone, but cultural council has asked for a lot of things, and that's equally important. So just, I think when you're taking that in consideration of what your boards and commissions want, you also have to explain to them that they might not get it, that, you know, it's a process. And we would always say, and I think, Craig, you've been here, we'd always tell them they wanted a art consultant, a full-time person to deal with our art. And we would always say, you know, what, we would love to have that, but, right, it was two years ago. So Craig, I don't think you were there. How do we explain, you know, not doing this that is infrastructure, or whatever it is, for an art consultant? So that's the balance. And I agree, we should have someone that navigates our senior citizen population, our aging population. But I just think, you know, telling them that, yeah, we might get it, or yeah, you're gonna advocate for it, but they might not get it. And that's where we sit on these boards to advocate and say, you know, it didn't come out this year, maybe next year, but I'm still pushing for it. Me and Craig always say that on the cultural council. We're gonna push for it. We're gonna advocate for it. We don't know if it'll happen. So I just wanna...
You're managing those expectations indeed. And by the way, Councilmember Noble, I do want to echo your great counsel to, when you're voting on this, to at least have a sentence or a very short paragraph to make sure everybody's on the same level playing field in terms of understanding, what am I actually voting for in terms of that? So that is an important idea.
Councilmember Smith?
I just have a question about Adams Tower. I know that didn't become a council policy, but it's already in process. So is that gonna continue to be worked on?
The purchase is supposed to actually occur this week, the closing. So, yeah, it's in process. Does that answer your question, or?
Well, is it still gonna be like bumped down to like a low priority? Because that was a rather large investment, so I just want to make sure it's not kicked to the background, and we don't just kind of lose track of it.
Because you've already invested a bunch into it.
Yeah. Yeah, so work will continue on that. The other thing I should say is the items that were consolidated here were based on the sticky note exercise from the 2020 winter retreat. So that's why, for example, the senior liaison and Adams Tower don't show up on this list. Those weren't brought up at that winter retreat. In terms of the senior liaison, the liaison that we previously had was a part-time position. And again, it's not in the budget for 2021. However, you know, that can be one of the items that you discuss and vote on when we have the reappropriation and new appropriation ordinance that comes up in June, July, in that timeframe. So, and meanwhile, Parks Recreation Gulf is having discussions with Community Relations about the possibility of, you know, what can they do in the meanwhile? Because they do have resources that are available. And the Parks Recreation Gulf Department has been working directly with Senior Hub, for an example. They worked together closely on some of the COVID measures. So there are some resources available. You know, do we consolidate that into a new part-time position? That's certainly council's choice when we're ready to have that appropriation ordinance.
Anything, go ahead.
Councilmember Noble?
Thank you. And Councilmember Wadiola, you are absolutely right. In fact, the senior liaison was put on this list because we brought it up last year at a council meeting, so it wound up on the list. I would love to see all of the commissions and committees' wishes on this list. So if you have them for the cultural council, I'd like to see them on this list. I'd like to know why they're important, and for each of us to do our own paragraphs about why, or a couple of lines or whatever, about why this is important, so that we can inform our colleagues also, if we haven't discussed it at a meeting. It, you may, you know, it's been an interesting experience, and I guess I will have three more of these ahead of me. But it does remind me of even having the legislative... But it does remind me of even having the legislative session last a couple of weeks ago. And thinking that they actually make their decisions about what bills they're going to bring forward in the summer. And we're having a legislative session in January. So we actually missed our opportunity to say, you know what? We want you to rein in metro districts, you know what, we want you to do, you know, whatever would have been on that list, so. We need to change our calendar or reconsider our calendar in order to become more effective as a city council. Thank you.
Okay, let me just do a check in. Where are we in terms of the priority list? Is there uh, anything else that somebody wants to advocate for? And are we ready to move on and say this is a great starting place? And Roger, your 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 comments, I want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I want to ask you to rephrase them is. That the way you look at this list is that the items that are high priority is what ca- what staff will pay attention to. Um, projects in process will continue unless you're told otherwise. And then items that did not get votes, did not show up as priorities, as time permits, as resources allow. Those are things that you can begin to pay attention to during 2021. Um, do I remember that correctly? I hope I quoted you appropriately, sir.
Yes, yeah, in general terms, that's correct. I just noticed that sen- senior liaison is on this list. I didn't think it was, I I missed it, but it's uh, near the bottom. Uh, under improved community involvement and trust, and the uh. That's the overall goal, and then the objective under that is, or target is an inclusive community. So it is one, two, three, four, five, six lines from the bottom. Senior liaison rece- received uh, zero hype rating. It received four mid rating, medium, so. You know, again, it it didn't get enough votes to go into the top 26 council priorities, but. You know, it's still, it's on the list and and uh, it's underway. I see it's shown as a project in process. Uh, Adams Tower, there was a question about that, that's near the top in the green section, it's shown as 40%. Um, it wasn't shown as a council priority simply because it it only received one high rating, two medium, and three low. So, but it's a project that's in process. Sorry, not fast enough on the draw to answer everyone's instantaneously.
I'm surprised you don't have this list committed to memory and just, you know, photographic memory, just be able to spout off. What line and what color? I'm impressed that you were able to find that, okay. Council, again, where are we, sir? Go ahead.
I have uh, one item that I would like council to consider adding at the last minute. Um, it's an issue that I know is important to a lot of residents, but uh, our Christmas decorations are not in the best condition. They've been out there probably since the 1970s, maybe even before then. A lot of people really feel like we are doing a disservice to the community by not updating those, so. I would like to see that as an addition, and would like this council to push to have the Christmas decorations updated, so that we have new decorations this year.
Councilmember Wadiola?
I I would agree with you, mayor, uh, I've gotten that. Um, and I thought we were doing that a couple of years ago, but they told us that it was like 110,000. But uh, um, with that said, um, also, we've always asked if we could get Quebec lighted up. Um, and you know, uh, it is what it is, they've given us other different answers, but. I think if we're going to upgrade our our Christmas lights, we should uh, try to get Quebec lit up with Christmas lights, um, so I would support that.
Fully agree on that, and you know, uh, we did get a favorable report last night on the financials that we did better than we thought we were going to do, so. It seems like there's a little bit extra money out there that could quickly and easily be allocated to funding uh, upgrade of our decorations. Councilmember Helen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, mayor, couldn't agree with you even more. Um, I just hope it's taken into consideration that East 62nd Avenue be added to that, possibly if funding permitted. That is a a core street in the core of the city as well, and also on 104th Avenue. As well, if those, if that's involved part of the update as well, so thank you.
Sounds like a comprehensive plan is in order.
Both great locations, thank you. Councilmember Hearst?
Yeah, I'll jump into support that. I I not at, not trying to tell the city how to run it, but it'd be um. I I would just suggest we do a committee that talks about, you know, if we're going to invest that much money into new decorations, we should also. Take a look at uh, locations of those decorations and just make sure you, they're all great locations, they're suggested, but that just, it makes sense, right? If we're going to overhaul, we can overhaul possibly where where we're setting them up at as well.
One question of clarification, uh, councilmember Ellen Thomas, did you say 60th, six zero, or six two?
No, um, I s- I said, um, starting from Quebec and East 62nd Avenue. All the way down to the Vasquez, um. Where all the lights are by the McDonald's and the Starbucks, that area, because a lot of residents use that. East 62nd Avenue to go to a lot of our local stores like the Walmart, King Supers, and all the local fast food restaurants.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would agree with councilmember Hearst, I think that getting a committee together, getting some citizen engagement on the idea of where they think, and also uh, some different ideas tossed around of what. Decorations should be put up and uh, then let everybody have an input on that instead of just going off and choosing something. Seen some horrible examples of decorations that were intended well, but did not get uh, the result that they were looking for, but. Once again, I do think that it's time that we make this investment in the community, and we have talked about this a couple of times as a council, yet have never pulled the trigger, so. No time like the present to do so. Councilmember Hearst, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I just, you know, I I know that those types of requests put a a strain on staff to try to throw together a committee and manage it, but. Um, just something to consider for our group uh, to give direction on is maybe Parks and Rec and the cultural council, both of those. Seem to, you know, have had past roles and things similar to this, um, naming conventions, things like that, and so. There may be an opportunity to kind of um, look back at what we've done before and kind of recreate that internally amongst already created commissions that. That might help us be more efficient in that process.
That's a beautiful idea.
So question, um, that's four of the nine that want that to happen, are are there additional council members that view that as a priority?
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I agree, it should be a a big priority. You look at other cities, you know, um. Brighton, Denver, all of those with their lit up streets, and I think we definitely need to have that um. That feel when people come into Commerce City, right, and putting, and having like the updated. Um, Christmas decorations kind of all over the city kind of unifies us in a way as well, so. I'm definitely for it.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm definitely in support of it as well.
Councilmember Noble?
Me too.
Councilmember Madera?
I I don't think it's a high priority, but I think if we are going to do it, we should be um, strategic in how we do it, because. You've got to think about the size of the city. We have one of the largest cities landwise, you know, 36 square miles. And um, you know, we have a lot more limited resources than Denver that has a billion-dollar budget every year. To spend on uh, stuff like lights and these type of things, so I, you know. I love Christmas, I love lights, but at the same time, I realize that there's a lot more important things in the city. And um, so if we're going to do it, we need to be strategic, you know, like Denver has certain areas that they have lit up. Thornton has certain areas, and our municipal center is lit up and, you know, looks great, and nobody ever talks about it. So people only want to talk about the bad and not so much about, you know, what what's going well, so. I I would say it's a low to medium priority for me, but if we're going to do it, we should uh. Definitely target what areas we want to have lit and then do that well.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you, mayor, uh, I'm really more in alignment with Councilman Madera on this. I think it's a great idea. I I love Christmas too, love lights. Um, however, to really get behind it, I'd like to see updated cost estimates for what it would take once we kind of identify. What areas of the city we want to light up. Um, I can't commit to that without knowing, is this a half a million-dollar project, or is it, you know? I'd like to see more of that before really putting my support behind it.
Councilmember Hearst?
The final pitch to that is, you know, we just talked about our image. Um, and I think, and we talked about connecting our community, and I think um, the the reason for a. Committee, if you will, or finding a way to 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 have a combined committee is. We have the opportunity then to 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 kind of take the holistic approach and be fair, maybe it's. Um, you know, we're not just thinking about Christmas, we're thinking about holidays in general, and you know, trying to be very inclusive in that sense. So getting multiple perspectives is kind of what I'm looking for, and um, my real dri- driving, you know, my sales pitch, if I were to have to justify. Financial commitment to this would be exactly what I mean, is we're looking to improve our im- image and show that we're. Um, working together, both sides of the city, we have, you know, unifying in one, maybe maybe it's a best time to do that, you know, and so um. That would be my final sales pitch on why it adds value to me, whether, you know, I'm not saying blank check by any means, but uh, uh, you know. If we do this appropriately, um, as I, as I believe the mayor intended, I think it could be a very positive thing for us to uh, get behind.
Good. Did we hear from everybody?
We did.
Thank you, and I just want to say that, councilmember Hearst, that is the the strategic approach that uh, councilmember Madera was talking about, and it's. Sounds like if you approach it that way and you you put cost to it, uh, as councilmember Grimes said, then that helps staff say. It is a council priority, and here's what it looks like, how heavy a lift is it in terms of budget and whatever, and then council, you. You would be voting on in the future as you, your normal protocol. Go ahead, Roger, I interrupted you.
So what we'll do is uh, we'll uh, investigate options and costs and bring that back to you as part of the. Again, reappropriation ordinance, uh, new appropriations in the June-July timeframe. That'll give us time to analyze it for you.
Anything else missing on the list, or somebody wanted to weigh in in terms of um. What got voted on and and why, understand the rationale so that you can, you walk away with a sense of this is the right list, we had the right conversation.
Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, and I have to call myself out again. Um, I went back and looked at my survey responses in order to understand why there were only four votes for a senior liaison. Um, as a medium, and there was no high, because I knew I had voted high on that one. It turns out that because of the fine print, um, I had put it high in the next box down. Which was for Spanish language, but we were already doing Spanish translation for our council meetings. So that would have been one of the categories that I would not have done at the moment, simply because we were already doing it, although. Do we have a Spanish translator tonight? Um, anyway, so my vote for the senior liaison would have been a high. And it's not recorded on that list, just for the record. My um, my error because of the fine print.
That's councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, and I I just can't stress enough, um, I would have liked to see um, somewhere in there, um, as I mentioned before. Hiring more police officers and not just the technology aspect as well, and I realize, um. You know, because I I'm I'm tired of hearing there's not enough officers, and we're short. So that's, you know, something I I can live with and go on with the priorities now, but I do hope that is seriously taken into consideration. That we do need more officers in Commerce City, and you know, that will help us significantly.
Councilmember Grimes? Thank you, Mayor Proton, um, I would support that 100% if we're looking for things to add here at the last minute, councilmember Ellen Thomas. Um, I'm I'm supportive of dedicating more budget to hiring more officers.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yeah, I think we need to clarify understanding on that one too. Um, and the reason I ask is because since I've gotten on council is my understanding that we've always been in a plus 10. Um, approval situation, meaning we have justified 50 officers, we've given approval to hire up to 60 at all times. Uh, I don't, don't quote me on those numbers, I was just trying to give an example, but. Roger or or chief, can we, can we um, clarify that point? Are we still in that position? Because if we if we're not, then then maybe we have more of a discussion to have.
Um, what we're doing currently is I I had authorized over hires of seven officers.
So 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 same type of uh, mentality where turnover's high, it's really tough to hire people, so if you can get quality applicants, you get them in. Um, you justify the additional cost, knowing that there's going to be turnover, or just be, just because of the trend lines, right? And so.
Right.
We haven't moved off that position, then I I think councilwoman Ellen Thomas, I fully support that, but. I think the reason I didn't prioritize it the way that I would have without that said program is because of that understanding that. We're already in a uh, plus situation where we're hiring more than we have justified in the budget, if you will, and. Um, I think the bigger problem is how do you, how do you get the amount of people to apply and hire on and stick through the process? Is the bigger challenge that industry-wide, all police op-, you know, police forces are having those troubles. Especially if you are not the high end of the pay scale.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yeah, and and it was in uh, we tried to do this and uh, chief was telling us, you know, they're at the right capacity. That our our uh, facilities could hold with the over hires. Um, so I think uh, that's why I didn't either, uh, definitely support, once the chief gives us the go-ahead that, hey, I need more. Um, then I think that's when council uh, would act, and and I think we would act. But um, just hiring and putting it in the budget, just without consulting the chief and say, hey, do we have capacity? Um, I think it was, we we've had a couple of other um, asks, and he was like, not right now, we're not there yet, so. That's why I did, so I think we have to ask the chief what his 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 capacity is and if if they could do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yeah, last one on that, and I think that's part of the reason why I was considering my thought process of the um, reporting. Software was the chief asked for some um, flexibility, maybe like some alternative position types, uh, more civilian type. That could take on roles that would basically put badged officers back on the road. Um, 100% support that, and if we, if you could point out a place that we didn't prioritize that action. Please, please point that out, because I think we'd all be interested in hearing that. Um, I I just want to make sure that my personal opinion is that I really love the the chief's approach to. Um, not, you know, identifying the struggles of hiring badged officers, so looking for alternative solutions to that issue. Bringing those to us, and then we prioritize those. Um, that's got, that's got to help us bridge the gap, and this is going to be a fairly expensive year, taking on new, new unfunded mandates. And so finding those um, cost-saving opportunities was critical to me in my mindset of what I wanted to prioritize from a police department ask standpoint. So I just, just want to make sure we're on the same page, because there are a couple that I think needed further clarification.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you, Eric, and I'd just like to add, um, if the number of police officers is not what we need, but maybe. Funding or budget to retain officers, then I still think it's a valid um, thing to add to the list. If we need more money to retain them, higher salaries, um, better protections, I want Commerce City to be a city. Where police officers want to come to work, I want us to be a police-friendly city. And I think that that's the first step in in attracting more badged officers to come here. And um, if it takes budget to do that, then I would advocate for adding that budget and asking the chief how he, how he thinks we can best use it.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, and you know, like you said, I just wanted to clarify, um, you know, councilman Hearst, maybe you have one-on-one conversations um. With the chief, um, but from what I hear. with the chief, um, but from what I hear him continuously saying, there's not enough staff, there's not enough staff. So, you know, that's why I was really pushing for that, um, you know, if residents in my ward call me because an officer can't come to their home, you know, that's a concern to me and then I get a phone call from them. So, you know, that's why I was really pushing for that and not just technology version of it because it's really upsetting for me when a constituent calls me and says their call is not a top priority. So I just wanted to clarify that's, you know, big concern, especially in my ward too, which I like to can't repeat enough, that has one of the highest crime rates and I wish that was a top priority, especially when the chiefs lets us know continuously there's not enough, uh, police officers. And like you said, I realize that's a problem everywhere with this pandemic, but we need to focus on that as well, you know, and I'll, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, just some response, but council, councilwoman Ellen Thomas, I just wanted to make sure you knew that I thought it was a priority as well. I just was under a different understanding that we are, we are asking them by, by, um, Roger continuing that policy for the plus hires. We are prioritizing that, in my opinion, trying to get even more, more officers on board than our kind of number system shows that we need or maybe even have cars for. And so, I didn't want it to be in public record that that's not a priority for us. It very much is, we just have a system in place that hopefully we can have success within twenty twenty-one by getting, you know, the plus five hires, plus seven hires. But having realistic expectations to the current job market for that industry is, is a tough one right now.
It sounds like we're, we're repeating ourselves now. So, uh, Roger, it's, it is a the request of the council that it, it, it is enhanced in this priority list, whatever the language is. It sounds like there's, there's consensus. Is there anybody who disagrees with the, the conversation at, at hand around police officers, whether it's attracting or retaining? So that Roger's clear about what, what council's priority focus is.
Well, let me clarify one point. Uh, when the chief says it's lacking officers, that's been due to vacancies and, uh, people out on, uh, quarantine for COVID. So what I would offer you is we will definitely have a conversation about, uh, the number of officers or the number of, of authorized positions. Because it's, it's a number of authorized, uh, positions is a different question than number of officers who are available at any one given time. So, you know, i- if it truly is the vacancies that are causing us the problem, then, then that may need one type of solution. If it's, uh, the sheer number of authorized positions, that's a different solution. So we'll, we'll clarify that and bring that back to, uh, council. When, again, when we, we talk budget measures. Clint, go ahead. Sorry, Chief. Chief, you got your hand up?
Yes, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Good now.
Okay, thank you. I said, I wanted to provide some clarification to that. We are currently one or two bodies off of our authorized strength. But understand that seven of them are actually in the academy. So while they count towards our budget, they are not actually completing their jobs. Today we did, uh, hiring, uh, or I'm sorry, interviews for hiring for the four additional CSOs. In addition to that, the CSO supervisor position is going to get posted, I believe sometime this week. So we are making headway, uh, staffing ebbs and flows. We lost nine police officers during the pandemic, so we're just now starting to fill that. And so even though those folks are in the academy, they will actually not be available and on the street for almost a year. And so, I, I, I don't want to paint this picture that we're not staffed adequately, it just takes time to get them through training on the street so they're in a capacity where they actually can perform their jobs. That is always the, the, the trick to managing this.
Councilmember Hearst.
Just start charging me if I keep my hand up bald, does.
You know, I, I fully support, uh, more money going to the police department, especially for the recruitment, retention and improvement in the staffing numbers that we have. I think it's always been a challenge, uh, as long as I can have been involved, uh, in, in Commerce City to have the numbers that we need in order to adequately police this city, given the geographical challenges that we have as well as some of the crime and some of the influx that we've had and the increase in crime because of COVID. We had a conversation after Labor Day, whenever we had a couple shootings that took place, Labor Day weekend. And, uh, one of the things that, um, I think that we really need to look at is the impact that all of the residential development in Commerce City has on our police department. A lot of the, uh, minor crimes, uh, minor in the fact that they're nonviolent, minor in the fact that they are not, uh, life-threatening. But mostly property, personal property crimes that are occurring are occurring in residential neighborhoods. You know, back in two thousand seventeen, when I decided I wanted to run for city council, one of the first things I did was read the budget report. And, uh, the cover letter for that budget report by the previous city manager indicated in there that continued development in the northern range continues to put a strain on our city resources to include the police department. You know, the fire department took action, uh, a couple of years ago, um, just before, uh, the four of us, five of us got elected and pushed for a fire department impact fee that is charged on, uh, single-family homes and some commercial businesses. And I really think that as we continue to see residential development, last year alone, we had nine hundred and fifty-eight single-family housing permits pulled. Now, it's almost a thousand homes that are being built in Commerce City in a year. And that, so then you take and figure three people per house, that's three thousand residents that are increasing in here. Those are staggering numbers. Many communities won't see that level of growth in a decade. And we're seeing it year over year after year. And I really think that we need to consider putting a public safety impact fee on the construction and issuance of every one of those single-family dwellings in order to help us to fund additional police officers that need to be there in order to do more important than crime, responding to crime, but actually crime prevention. We need more officers on the street patrolling through our neighborhoods. We need more officers out there working in order to get the drugs off the street, in order to get the criminals off the street. And we're not going to do that unless we start putting more money on it. And right now, the way our budget is structured, we either rob Peter to pay Paul, where we come up with another funding stream. So I will ask council to consider that. And we really should take up an actual discussion on whether or not we should have that public safety impact fee on single-family dwellings in order to help us to add police officers and add the support staff needed for those police officers, as well as something that I think is going to be critical is an actual northern area substation. The facility that they are out of now does not really function as a substation. They cannot take any, uh, suspects, if that's proper terminology, they can't take them there, they don't have the facility for them. We need something that is going to allow them to be more efficient and allow the police officers that are serving our community bravely to be more efficient and doing their job. So would ask you guys to consider that and, uh, we should have a conversation over whether or not that's a, a good way for us to go about trying to increase the revenue stream for the police department.
Very good. I'd like to change the focus for just a few moments, it just to make sure that we are still focused on priorities here. And, and, uh, you are focused on priorities. Is there anything on the list that you should do less of or eliminate? Something that was a priority. Now, based on the conversation, we've added a couple of other priorities. Is there anything that you would make a case and say, now that I've heard this, uh, and taking the mayor's word, you know, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul? If we keep adding priorities without taking something off the list, uh, that becomes a challenge operationally, but, uh, is there anything that you can make a case for to say, should we reevaluate this council members or are we good at where we are right now as a starting place?
Member Grimes.
I'm happy with the list as it is, plus the additions that we've talked about.
Okay, thank you. Others?
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I agree with the list too, but like I said, I can't agree with the mayor more. You know, maybe we need to have a study session or something to figure out what can be done first about the, the, you know, officer issue and to try to get experienced, um, officers as well in Commerce City, if it's going to take a year. Plus another station up there in the north. So, you know, if we have to evaluate the priorities again and make adjustments, I'm fine with the list, but I, like I said, I can't stress enough and agree with the mayor and other council members. You know, getting some officers in this community with the growth is a serious concern.
I, I think it's been added. Roger, you've added as some variation of a priority?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else, folks, as you look at this list?
Councilmember Noble.
What does community policing mean on the list?
Clint, the chief can answer that better than I can, but it, just in general terms, as he unmutes himself, in general terms, it's, uh, you know, engaging the public and interacting with them so that there's, uh, you know, basically a, a person-to-person type of relationship that encourages crime reporting and, and, uh, that type of thing. Go ahead, Chief.
That's correct, Roger. One of the things we're doing this year is we've placed a new emphasis on community policing. So what you will find out is that, uh, each, between the north and the south, each have a dedicated commander. And we've taken the different teams that work in the north and the south and assigned them certain neighborhoods that they are responsible for their sort of criminal and quality of life issues. And so what we're hoping to bring about is increase our neighborhood watch awareness, uh, reduce crime victimization, do some crime prevention so that when, so if you live in Buffalo Run, you will have a dedicated sergeant that will be responsible for all your criminal needs. And they will coordinate so that you're not calling me, not that you can't call me, but you know exactly who you need to go to to get your problems or issues addressed. And so when we get CRMs that come out of certain neighborhoods, they will go to specific sergeants that will address those concerns. That puts them in a better ability to be able to detect patterns and crime patterns and put themselves in a position to see these systemic problems and address them for long-term problems instead of the officer of the day going out there dealing with it, writing a ticket and going on his days off for the next three days. And it's, we don't realize it's a nuisance until it's happened fifteen, twenty times. So it's just a new strategy that we're working on.
Okay, so we have decrease domestic violence, decrease auto thefts, decrease police response times and community policing as four priorities? Would those not all be combined into one? Are they not all kind of police department priorities as one to decrease these things? And, and the community policing?
Yes, ma'am. And I can tell you, we have hundreds of priorities outside of what council actually sees. So, you are right, but we wanted to put some things on there that our public could actually track and hold us accountable for. And trying to put everything on the list, unfortunately, at some juncture, depending upon, for instance, should homicide start to climb? That's a much more, uh, serious crime. I have to take assets and resources from other parts of the department to work on reducing that number. So those were just items that we put on there that we were going to make a concerted effort to work on. But quite frankly, our priorities change depending upon what we've got going on in the community. But those were our, those were the one-year annual work plan items that we were truly going to put some effort towards trying to make those programs better because we've recognized that we can do a better job.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. And then attract diverse employers. Support startups and local businesses, work with real estate community. And would those not all fall under economic development? Are those not descriptions of a, of a job in economic development?
They are. Uh, they take different strategies and so that's why we left them split out. Because it, it, it takes a different type of approach for each one of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's see, let's continue the straw poll in terms of anything to eliminate. Are you, are you good with the list at this point? Did we have the right discussion? Are you feeling good that city manager then begins to, um, evaluate those priorities and, and try to operationalize them? And I was, I was speaking to another consultant who was doing a strategy planning session for another council. And her, she said, one of the council members told the other council members, if we as a council don't prioritize, then staff has to prioritize, they have to take up the slack. So this is your chance to say overarching, what are the guidelines of success in terms of where, where do resources go in twenty twenty-one? So anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Councilmember Hearst.
Mr. Ramos, will you please, um, put the list back up? I've been trying to keep track on my computer with the changes, but I, I,
John, John, can you put that list back up? Yeah, I have my own personal list up too, so, thank you.
I just think for everybody to kind of get one last collective view might help me, for sure.
Thank you, John. Assuming that was John in the background.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm good with the list how it is and the other things that we talked about adding.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Wadilla.
Oh, yes, sorry. I was, uh, that was what I was trying to do, June, was to look for things that might be sort of eliminated because it was already part of a job responsibility, if you will. That's all I was thinking about on those. And, um, shoot, I had one other question, but I'm going to put my hand down again because now I don't remember what it was. Thanks.
Councilmember Wadilla.
I'm good with the list also.
I'm good with the list with the changes.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, I'm, I'm good with the list as well, but like I said, the additional changes.
Member Smith.
I'm good with the list and the changes.
Looks like we're going to move forward with this list as it is, or with the changes that were mentioned.
So let, let me, uh, just make sure that we have captured the changes correctly. What I, what I've jotted down, and I'll ask, uh, John and Annette and Kathy if, if, if I missed anything. I heard, uh, staff is to bring back, uh, basically an evaluation on Christmas decoration replacement. Discussion of more officers. And, uh, a public safety impact fee and a north police station, substation evaluation. Is that capture it?
I actually heard, Roger, the expansion by a couple people that it, the more strategic approach that Christmas was a pivotal, uh, focus, but also may expand it to, to other holidays and, and make it more strategic with community involvement.
I also heard looking at experienced or lateral type of officers to get people hitting the ground running faster.
Okay. Any other feedback, council? Did that represent your thinking this evening? The changes that you were saying worked for you? Okay, thumbs up. Thank you, sir. Roger, so what is the next step? Are you going to, um, update this list then for council?
We will. Yes, we will. Um, our February one, uh, agenda is really full and set, so I would imagine that, uh, March one would be the earliest we could bring this back.
Councilmember Noble.
I remembered. So we're going to be having a goal-setting session for our retreat, I guess, as part of our retreat. How does this play into that discussion? Does this drive the goals or backwards? I mean, the goals that are here on this list are not the goals that were set by this, uh, city council. So how does that all work together?
This is for twenty twenty-one. The, uh, upcoming retreat is for twenty twenty-two. And so the first item This is for 2021. The, uh, upcoming retreat is for 2022. And so the first item on that agenda would be, uh, evaluating, you evaluating the five existing goals. Uh, do you want them reworded? Do you want new goals? You know, what, what should those goals be? And then that in turn drives what the targets, uh, need to be to achieve those goals. And so that, that starts a process that will take some time because we're, we're going to have to go through several iterations. Uh, you know, we, we did a couple of iterations for this update for 2021. It's going to take probably several more iterations for that one. Uh, and that's why, uh, you had mentioned, you know, doing it closer to budget time. The only problem that causes us, it does not give staff time to, uh, do the proper amount of thinking and research in terms of what it would take to accomplish your goal if it's a new goal. Um, so that, that's going to take some time to formulate what those targets should be in order to achieve the goal and then bring that to you to make sure that that meets your expectations. And then from the targets, what are the objectives that achieve those targets and start thinking in terms of, uh, in doing the research of what dollars are going to be required to achieve, uh, those particular objectives. And, and so that's why it's going to be an iterative approach where we, you know, tackle first goals and then targets and then the objectives and then put the research into what budget is going to be necessary, what staff resources are going to be necessary to achieve those objectives.
So in terms of managing expectations then, in reality, um, what we do next will not have an effect until the budget of 2022, that we're always running a year behind, if we will. Uh, we did sort of skip this, the goal discussion last year. That did not occur for various reasons. So we continued on from the 2019 group.
Right.
To 2021. So we actually are even further behind than we might be typically. But in general, we have to wait a year before anything can potentially change unless it's a rush of some kind, you know, that we say this is now a high priority and it has to come from somewhere else.
Special project.
Yeah, correct.
Member Noble, one of the other preliminary steps as facilitator of that workshop, that winter retreat, um, I'm working with Annette and, um, I'm going to try and get on your calendars. I'm going to do preliminary interviews and do some, uh, groundwork and obtain some thinking about what are the strategic areas so that I come prepared with pre-thinking from council about what are some possible goals and objectives that you're looking forward to in 2022. And, um, I'll be working with you in those individual interviews, excuse me, asking a series of questions and, and come prepared to, um, to put in front of you some, some target discussion points so that we're not starting from scratch at that winter retreat. So I want to do some homework with you in advance to start that process.
That sounds like a great idea. Thanks so much.
And just to recap on when that retreat occurs, um, the last discussion that I recall council having is you wanted to have the new city manager in place. Um, my only concern is, uh, it's, it's taking a fairly long time to get to the interview process for the new city manager. So that potentially may delay the winter retreat. Uh, could end up being a spring retreat, but, uh, at any rate, just, just wanted to still verify with council that that's how you want to approach it. That you want the new city manager involved and present for that retreat.
Let's, uh, go ahead. And if you want this new city manager in place before we do our winter retreat, then use your physical hands so we can give direction to staff on that one. Or seeing no hands up, if you're okay with doing the winter retreat earlier to give to staff ample time to start preparing on the 2022 budget, then please use your hands now. So I have two people that have voted one way and nobody else has voted the other way. So let's try again. If you want the new city manager to be in place and hired before we do our winter retreat, please use your physical hands. If you are good with having the winter retreat before we have a new city manager hired and want to do that now, please use your physical hands. There you go, Mr. Dinklberg. Please plan the winter retreat.
Okay, thank you. We will do that.
Councilmember Wadiela?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I thought we already settled that, Roger, that it wasn't really going to be a big thing if they hired him not, but cool. You got your direction. Thank you, though.
I don't have any hair, so it may have just skimmed right off my skull.
Got you, man.
Okay, good job on the prioritization. We learned a couple of lessons about process and some suggestions to make it move more smoothly next time. Thank you for those, uh, process recommendations. Thanks for the opportunity to work with you again this evening. Uh, Mayor, I turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time this evening. And I think that you've done a wonderful job in moderating the last couple of meetings we've been in and appreciate you, uh, being here to support our city council and doing so. Um, that concludes everything that we have on the agenda for this evening. Um, we do not have any reports or anything else to add to that. Our next meeting is February 1st for a regular city council meeting. And I look forward to seeing everybody then. Have a good night. Have a good week.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.